I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, if we stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clark, do we have the roll call, please?
Dana Girardi.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
John Woody.
Here.
Natalie Moes.
Here.
Sarah Poplick.
Here.
Richard Nella.
Here.
Chairman Charles Gray.
Here.
And the proof of publications.
The items are advertised in the Tampa Bay Times on May 1st, 2024, July 10th, 2024, and November 6th, 2024, and by affidavit of certified mail-in and site listing.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I'd like to welcome everybody today. We're the Planning Commission. We're appointed by the county commissioners, and we meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency, and we hold public hearings and transmit to the board of county commissioners recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the board of county commissioners. Anyone in opposition to any land development code amendment, resounding conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the board of county commissioners, it'll be important for you to attend the appropriate board of county commission meeting. For those of you who are not familiar with the format of our meetings, we have three sections, continuances, consent, and regular items. We'll go through them one at a time, and it's our custom to, if there's been a request from the applicant or from the staff for continuance, to grant their request unless there are unusual circumstances. The consent items, we will go through one at a time. As we go through consent, if there's something on consent you'd like to have heard, please raise your hand. We'll pull it from consent for, to go on to the regular items. Once we go through consent, any items that remain on consent will be voted on at one time. Regular items will be gone through individually, and we'll have an opportunity for anyone to ask questions and to, for the applicant to make a presentation. Applicants will have five minutes to make their presentation, and anybody who has questions about that application will have three minutes to make their questions known, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back up and try to respond appropriately to those questions. We also have time for public comment, so if there's anybody here that is here to speak about anything not on today's agenda, please let us know, and we'll have, we'll listen to your concerns before we get started. It's our policy that if somebody has requested additional time, at least 24 hours prior to this meeting in writing, we typically would grant some extra time if needed. I don't think we have any requests. Do we?
Mr. Chair, we don't have any requests.
Okay. Do we have anybody online?
We don't have anyone signed up for WebEx for public comment or any items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So before we start the meeting, this is a good opportunity to remind you to please silent your phones so that they don't ring. I do my own, too, in the middle of a presentation. So is there anybody here that does want to speak to something that's not on today's agenda? If there is, please raise your hand. I don't see anyone. Okay. So if you plan to give testimony today, would you please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, thank you. Okay, Liam, I think we can begin.
Good afternoon. Liam Devine, Planning Development Economic Growth Department. PC-1, PDE 25-7807. It's a special exception in the name of Lake Shore Boulevard LLC. This is coming with a request to continue the item to January 23rd, 2025, in Newport Ritchie.
At 1:30 PM.
Okay. So January 23rd?
2025.
25 at 1:30.
Yep.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Was there anyone here to speak on this one?
PC-2, PDE 25-7806. It is a zoning amendment companion to PC-1 in the name of Lake Shore Boulevard LLC. This is also a continuance request to January 23rd, 2025, 1:30 PM in Newport Ritchie.
All right. Again, and the applicant is not present. Is anyone here to speak on this one? Okay?
PC-3, PDE 25-7783. It is a zoning amendment in the name of Dijon Gordana Vich, and it is a contin, it's a request for continuance to a date uncertain.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
For PC-4, I do have some little housekeeping. There was an error on the memo for the recommended committee action. It currently reads continue to December 12th, 2024, Planning Commission meeting in 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. It should say Dade City. And then also in the background section, it currently reads Planning Development Economic Growth Department is requesting the item to be continued to December 12th, 2024, PC meeting 1:30 in Newport Ritchie. It should say Dade City. So this item, PC-4, PDE 25-7785, it's a zoning amendment in the name of New York Avenue Business Park LLC, Diagonal Road Business Park. It is a continuance request to December 12th, 2024, in Dade City.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay.
That was our last continuance.
All right. So did I hear a motion?
Motion to approve continuance of PC-1 and PC-2 to January 23rd, 25. Can't believe we're saying that. And Newport Ritchie, PC-3 to date uncertain, and PC-4 to December 12th, 24, in Dade City.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like, sign. Motion carries. Okay.
PC-5, PDE 25-7840. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Rowan Road LLC, Beeb Industrial. It's a change in zoning from PO2 Professional Office District to I-1 Light Industrial Park District. It's located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Rowan Road and Alderman Lane, containing approximately 1.8 acres. This is coming with a recommendation from approval from Planning Development Staff, Planning Development and Economic Growth Department.
Okay. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object?
PC-6, you're sitting as the local planning agency. PDE 25-0046 is a comprehensive plan amendment. CPAS 2403, Lake Park CPA, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use maps, Maps 2-15 and Sheet Number 3, changing from COM Commercial to RES 6, residential six dwelling units per gross acre on approximately 2.57 acres of real property located in the northwest corner of the intersection of Hudson Avenue and Hicks Road. This is coming with a recommendation that you find the proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan, and again, you're sitting as the local planning agency.
Mr. Chair, I had some questions for staff on this one.
Okay. Okay. You want to pull it?
Yes, please.
Okay.
If you don't mind us skipping out of order, AP-9 on your agenda is actually the companion MPUD for that, so I'll read that one into record as well. AP-9, PDE 25-7794, a zoning amendment in the Lake Park MPUD, Hudson Avenue Land Company, rezoning requests from C-2 General Commercial zoning district and MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of up to 100 single-family detached dwellings and associated infrastructure on approximately 57.4 acres located in northwest Pasco County, directly north of Hudson Avenue and directly west of Hicks Road. And this is coming with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
All right. Is the applicant present?
So, Mr. Chair, I don't necessarily want this one pulled, but I don't know that you can approve it on consent if you haven't approved the plan amendment. So
Okay.
we're gonna have to just hear them together.
Okay.
So I think you need to pull that one, too.
Okay.
So, PC-7 is already a regular item on your agenda, so I will go to AP-8, PDE 25-7841. It's a zoning amendment request in Citroco Alliance LLC, a change in zoning from AC Agricultural District and a C-2 General Commercial District to a AC Agricultural District and a C-2 General Commercial District. This is on the south side of Ridge Road, approximately a quarter mile east of Little Road, containing 9.92 acres, and this is coming with a recommendation for approval.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? See no one. You wish to leave it on consent?
Yeah.
Okay.
Our last consent item, AP-10, is a development agreement in Hawks Longleaf LLC to design, permit, construct roadway widening in exchange for cash reimbursement on West Pasco on Starkey Boulevard, south of Marsha Drive, to the north of Fanning Springs North Drive. The file number that I forgot to mention is TED, T E D 25-0018, and this is coming with a recommendation for, for approval.
All right. Applicant present? Anyone here to object? Okay. Then all the consent items. Okay. Did I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the consent agendas, PC-5, AP-8, and AP-10.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like, sign. Okay, motion carries. Okay. So we pulled PC-6.
Mr. Chair, I don't necessarily need a presentation on it. I just had sense to ask my questions
Okay.
that I need to answer. And the first of them relates to the discussion about the trail interconnects to the park, which is, I guess, item three on page five of the agenda. A statement, there's a statement there that there's the applicants proposing multiple connections to the park. Then the MP, when I read the MPUD, it doesn't necessarily require those connections, so there's a sort of an internal conflict between the two. So if staff could address that.
All right, thank you. David Engel, I'm the Planning and Economic Development Director for Pasco County. Relative to the question about the trail interconnection, the lack of consistency between the comp plan amendment and the actual MPUD, we have requested to have an interconnection with the neighborhood park that is adjacent to this property. At first, Parks indicated that they didn't want to pursue an interconnection. They had some issues with it. But we've had some dynamic discussions with the Parks and Recreation Department, and Commissioner Mariano was engaged with us, and Parks is willing to allow and entertain an interconnection into the neighborhood park. So it's our proposal to have the LPA sign off on this project today, but before it gets to the board on 12, on 1/28 at the board's January meeting here in Newport Ritchie, we will have revised and created that interconnection.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing you say, David, is that you'll have to amend AP-9, the MPUD, to the, to make the interconnect more mandatory? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so the bottom line is the comp plan amendment is correct, then there will be, in fact, connections.
Yes, sir.
But the MPUD will have to be modified to reflect that.
It will.
Okay. Is the applicant okay with this? Because the applicant's gone back and forth unfortunately. I feel bad for Barbara on this one because she's been whipsawed on this thing.
Yes, Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport Ritchie, 34652. It's very easy because I have the set of documents that show the connections. There's two of them, and all the conditions that go with it, and I have a set of documents that you see today that don't. Pursuant to a meeting that occurred this morning with Commissioner Mariano and Keith Wiley from Natural Resources and Parks, and Mr. Engel, myself, the client that's here, we're moving back into the set of documents that have the connections. That's the direction we're going. I have to add a little bit of language, talk about gating, because it's important to the Parks Department that we actually have a gate so that they don't get comments from the fu, comments in the future about people coming from the park into the neighborhood, and the neighborhood's upset about that. So we're working through some of that language, but we're going to go back and to where we were a few weeks ago with the documents that even you looked at and the language you looked at regarding the connections and the, and the offsite connection to their sidewalk within the Veterans Park to our north.
So I guess on that issue, you're look, when we get to AP-9, you're looking for a recommendation that you approve it with that modification that we just talked about related to the interconnect to the park?
Yes, please. We, there is no meeting in December in Newport Ritchie, and so we needed to make this meeting so we could do Newport Ritchie, and then we are, we don't go to the board until it's back in Newport Ritchie, and they're not back in Newport Ritchie until the 28th of January, so we have time to get all the language acceptable to everybody.
Okay.
Thank you.
And when Barbara refers to a gate, it'll be a FOB-controlled gate, so only the residents can get ingress and egress to and from, so the general public can meander through their neighborhood. They have to use the county sidewalk system.
Good, Neil.
Okay, so then my other question related to the analysis, the comp plan analysis under 1.8.7, and my question relates to, I guess, a potential conflict between staff's analysis and some statements that were made in the sheriff's comments related to kind of the tax generation analysis of these, of this change. I'll let David Engel kind of weigh in on this, but I think the memo, I'll let David Engel speak first, and then I'll give you my thoughts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Goldstein. So Flu Policy 1.8.7 is a holistic statement and a goal to look at the county at large and try to create more revenue-producing than revenue-consuming development, and we do that all the time. The question arose over a piece of property that's included in this parcel. It's a commercial zone property. At the moment, we're proposing to, and asking the board to allow us to integrate that with the residential project before you. The reason is, is that the area is overentitled right now for C-2 commercial. We have a lot of existing commercial in that Hicks Road-Hudson Avenue intersection, and because of the traffic congestion and unfortunately generating traffic that would cause a lot of road improvements, we've, we agree with the applicant in this case. So just from the standpoint of the big picture, my office had contracted Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council to produce a study for the board of county commissioners about two years ago, because we're underentitled for industrial in the, in the county and overentitled for commercial and residential. So we've embraced that. We've been working with that as a policy template, and now that we're doing, renewing the comp plan and rewriting it now, we're going to produce a lot more revenue-generating development in the county. So that, that's, that's why we were agreeable to eliminating the C-2, and we are working forward to creating a more revenue-centric plan for the county.
So David, I think the reason I brought this up is because the way this is worded in the memo, the comparison is to the vacant land, and I'm not sure that's the right comparison to be making on a plan amendment, because if you did that, any plan amendment would show more tax generation. To me, the comparison should be the existing flu. Now, if your argument is that that comm under the existing flu is unlikely to develop because of the oversaturation, and therefore will never generate the tax revenue that was assumed, that is a reasonable argument, but that's not what the agenda memo says.
Well, that's, that's correct. The agenda memo did not address that, but from my experience and understanding of this area, that property's been sitting vacant for years, and, and it could have been commercially developed with the other parcels in and around that neighborhood. The question is, though, whether that would be developed after that neighborhood exists, because there may be some more demand for commercial with the introduction of those extra residential units. Well, at, originally, and it was approved in the approvals, I think, good till 2027, for 330 townhouses. But because of changes in market and preference by the district commissioner, we're doing 55-foot-wide, single-family homes. So we're actually reducing the intensity from 330 townhouses to 100 single-family detached homes. So, and there is plenty of commercial there. The biggest issue was access to the park.
Yeah, I mean, and to be clear, I'm not trying to question what you're telling me verbally. All right, you're telling me verbally that the market's oversaturated for commercial in this area, and that by concentrating the commercial at Little Road, you may actually have more tax generation at Little Road because you're concentrating the commercial at Little. That's how I'm reading between the lines of what you're telling me verbally. My only point is that your analysis in the memo doesn't say any of that.
Well, you're correct.
And to compound it, there's a statement by the sheriff's office later that implies the opposite. So that's why I want to get this reconciled.
Well, and I appreciate you doing that, because, you know, frankly, I just discovered all this stuff this morning. I don't read every, every condition of approval or agenda document to that detail. But you're right, and we will clean it up.
Okay. Those are all, those are really all my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Thanks.
Thank you, David. Okay. So we still have to...
You still have to make a recommendation on PC-6, and it sounds like Mr. Engel's got the message on how to fix the agenda memo, if you want to.
Should make motions on PC-6 and 9?
Well, I would do them separately. Do PC-6 first.
All right. Did we hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Well, let me back up. I'm sorry. Barbara, did you want to say anything about PC-6? It's okay.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like, sign. Motion carries. PC-9, please, do we have a motion? PC nine, please. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Well, to be clear, that's your moving approval with the amended condition related to the trail interconnects to the park.
Correct. Yes, sir.
To be negotiated by staff and the applicant after this meeting.
Correct, what David said.
I'll still second that.
And it's still seconded, yeah. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign. Any motion carries? Okay, where does that leave us? Roberto.
P-seven.
Park.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the planning commissioners, commissioners. Roberto is a real plan and development department here for P-seven. It's mining operating permit and conditional use amendment request. K and M mine expansion. This is a mining operating permit and a conditional use permit amendment to an existing sand and lime, lime rock mine with no blasting in AC agricultural and AR-one agricultural residential dis, zoning districts. The northwest Pasco County on the south side of the county line road approximately three thousand two hundred feet west of the sun coast contain about a hundred and forty-nine point eight acres. Would you like to see a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that a maybe or was that a yes?
Yes.
We're having some technical difficulties right now, but we'll pull up the PowerPoint in a moment.
So in the meantime, there is a Skriebner's error that we identify on condition number thirty-eight. It should read conditions, it should, it should reference conditions fifty-six and fifty-seven, not fifty-four and fifty-five. And I believe... We have also received some expertise communications from some commissioners, planning commission, and also, I believe, BCC commissioners. So those will be a part of the record. They're not part of the packet in civic clerk. So the expertise will be forwarded to the clerk's office.
So, can we just hold up one second? The chair told me that he's going to have to recuse himself on this one, so before we take any motions to receive and file, if we could just get the chair to hand the gavel to Mr. Girardi to handle the rest of this item.
All right, so we're back on the presentation.
So I, but you probably need to take a motion to receive and file this information.
Second. Receiving files are second?
Yeah.
Yes, second.
Motion and a second to receive and file, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Close, motion carries.
Thank you. So we have item P-seven, PDE twenty-five, CU oh-six, which is the operating permit and conditional use amendment. Request for K and M Pasco. We have the proposal for the conditional use amendment and the operating permit. This is future land use rest one, zoning AC and AR. The applicant is requesting amending the current conditional use permit PDD twenty-two, CU oh-one in the name of K and M Pasco one thirty Holdings LLC and the mining operating permit. Again, this is on the south side of the county line road. It says here approximately sixty-eight hundred feet west of the sun coast parkway. So it depends how you look at, because the mine land does extend on the southern, on the boundary of the mine itself, but the actual entrance road is farther to the west. And I can show you that. Again, the site location is in the northwest portion of the county. And there it is. Is this the pointer right here? So as you can see, there's the, there's the mine right there. If you measure from here to here, it's a lot closer than if you measure from the actual entrance. So that's, that's where the discrepancy is. There's the sun coast right here. There's the county line road. And that's where we're at. Here's the aerial. And the request also includes for adding this portion, which is the HAMMO property. This is, this is part of this amendment to add that portion of land right here, which is wooded. This is the existing mine with a conditional use permit. There's, again, there's the entrance on this parcel right here, and there's county line road. And the future land use rest, rest one. And the zoning, this is the zoning portion of it is AC and a portion is AR. So this project is requesting adding the twenty acre on the western end of the Soja property mine, which is again the HAMMO parcel. Create a hundred football from the HAMMO parcel and remove the four hundred feet setback that was previously required along the existing mine. Modify the allowable quantities of excavated material, which shall not exceed five, five point four million approximately cubic yards of sand and approximately fourteen point threes, fourteen point four million cubic yards of limestone. Do I need to say the full numbers or am I okay with that?
No.
Okay. And this is accumulated for all previous and this proposed conditional use request. Also, they are planning to excavate to a depth of minus negative one hundred feet NAVD eighty-eight. And extend the terms of the mine until December thirty-first, twenty-fifty. And update the site development plans to reflect the same and update the conditions of approval, approval to reflect the same. This is the concept plan. Again, this is the existing portion. And this is the new HAMMO, HAMMO property being added. And with that, recommend approval of the conditional use amendment and the operating permit as requested from the planning commission and the planning and growth department.
Thank you, Roberto.
Thank you, Roberto. Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, David Engel, Planning and Economic Development Director, I just wanted to alert you that staff went out and they, they performed an onsite inspection of the mine, took detailed photographs and analysis of the surrounding land use and potential impacts. And this is a wet mine, so the typical dust and vibration that you would normally associate with a mine was not evident during operations. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Roberto, you didn't...
One more thing, one more thing before you comment. I apologize for that, sir. We did receive a, a person who had a concern. She sent like three different emails, and she asked us to let her, let, let the commission know. Vicky Bryan, six, one eight six two four county line road. She, she was complaining about the vibrations shaking my home. It seemed like an earthquake tremor. Here, I, I'm a senior and oxygen can't move around much. I received a letter that they want to dig deeper than permitted. Please, I called the mine pit on county line road two different times because they, they were shaking my home vibrating like earthquake tremors both times. They had stopped. I can live in fear of, to the unknown if sink holes open, hope as well. I don't even know they can, we want to risk the unknown as well. They won't give up. They need to buy an earthquake monitor, put in my yard to provide it. And their expense that my yard does not shake or vibrate like earth tremors because it does. And I'm unable to go to the meeting. Can you forward my email who in charge so my concern be heard? Please help me. I enclosed a pic of the letter. Thank you, Vicky Bryan. Second email, same person, similar issue. The manager came to my home today. Have a nice, he's a nice person, but I, but it really don't stop the fear of me living next to mines. Every day is really scary to the unknown. If a sinkhole opens up or even scary sinkhole might open up, just walk in my yard. It takes, it makes me feel sick mentally. Please put you in my spot, and you, I'm sure feel the same way as me. Please put this in consideration and not let them expand, dig, dig deeper. Please let my voice be heard for consideration. The meeting is November twenty-first at one thirty at the West Government Building. Thank you, Vicky Bryan, eighteen, one eight six two four county line road. And my address, thank you. And the third communication, similar. Hi, my name is Vicky Bryan. I live at eighteen six twenty-four county line road. I'm in oxygen and, well, I have had a hard time going to the bathroom. I'm not able to make it to the meeting. Please consider my statement. It is scary for me to live next to a mine. I'm scared of the known which affects me mentally. They had shook my home for a couple days like earthquake tremors. And other times, but times I call Pasco Mines and they stop. I worry just to walk in my yard. Is my yard going to open? And so shallow, swallow one of us. Please put yourself in my living situation as you be scared too. I am, I am against the mine to expand and dig deeper for the fear of my family and safety fear of the unknown, wondering what the mine had already done. Damage to the underground activities caused from then mining. There is so many land has not one living. Why can't they buy land in one of those areas? We are so, we are on social security. We recently got a mortgage payoff. We don't want to sell because it won't be enough, and we don't want another mortgage payment. Totally crazy. Live here thirty years. I only for neighbor get hair up. And do, this neighbor doesn't even care as long as it makes these millions. Please take my email to the court hearings for consideration and allow my email to be heard. Thank you, Vicky Bryan. With that said, we went and paid a side visit.
Before you leave that, did she want us to, her statement to be received and filed, or did it read?
She just said, take for consideration. Allow my email to be heard.
They're part of the agenda, right?
It's part of the record.
Yeah, they're part of the agenda. It's in the agenda.
I didn't realize it was already in there. Okay. Then my other question to you was, did you tell her that she could attend virtually? She said she couldn't attend because of her health concern. Is she, was she aware that she could attend virtually?
I did not tell her that, and I didn't know that she was aware of that. But I did go and pay visit with her, and I told her that we were gonna bring this up.
When it goes to the board, if she contacts you again, if you could just let her know that that's an option for her to attend virtually. That's one of the reasons we have virtual set up is if somebody has a health condition and they can't attend, they can attend virtually.
Okay, we'll do that.
If she's technologically able to.
Again, as we paid a side visit, the operation for K and M does not have a, does not have a vibratory operations. So we talked to K and M, and they can expand more of what was, what happened at the time. So anyways, that was the only comment, the negative comment that we received.
Can you?
Thank you.
You didn't talk about the vision road, and I was confused in reading the memo about the vision road. Where is that?
So the vision road for this permit request will not be touched. It will remain at the same location. And the vision road, it's, it comes in on Rigsby Road, which is right here. It turns a little bit. It goes north on the, on their property. Just east of the HAMMO property. It goes back, actually, yeah. It goes back and then it goes up north. Can we pull up the Pasco mapper? That way we make sure that we...
So I guess...
It's supposed to connect to Linden Road, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
It does come up, make a jog, go through the mine, and make a jog back?
Wait, let me pull up Pasco. That way we can make sure that we...
I don't know that the, what you're going to see on Pasco mapper is going to follow the exact alignment you're seeing on the plan. But they do have the ability to, on a vision road, to modify the alignment within their shot.
So that's going to go to my question. Why can't we just route the vision road around the mine rather than through it?
I will let the applicant talk about that.
It just, it seems to me that even though it's a private mining operation, it's a public resource. We need the material for the construction of the development projects. We approve new roadways. We need lime rock. We need sand. And it just seems like we're wasting part of that property already to create a raised road bed and slopes all the way down when we could use that material. You know, when this place is mined out, someone else is going to want to open another mine somewhere else, because I don't see the demand for sand or lime rock going anywhere anytime soon. So why not maximize the use? I thought maybe if it was critical that the road go straight or something, but you're already showing me it goes and makes a turn, comes over here, makes a turn and comes back. Why not just turn it over to the edge of the property and go around the mine so that we could maximize the use of the mine and get, get all the materials out before we have, you know, that just extends the life of the mine.
I was under the impression it was going straight as well until I saw that, so.
So if it goes north...
It just...
I think it does go straight till it gets to the HAMMO parcel, but we'll let...
That's why I couldn't tell when I looked at the plans how this was supposed to work.
It comes in from Rigsby Road.
I, sorry, can't see that from here.
And then, and then it yogs to the west. Yeah, it's on right there. It says roadway W.
Mr. Chairman, the county engineer is here and can address these questions.
Great.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, I see the dotted line.
So, so the, but that would tend to indicate that it would go along the western boundary of what you're calling, is that the HAMMO parcel?
On the eastern boundary.
On the eastern boundary. What would stop it from going further west and then coming up and jogging back to the east? You already got a change in alignment east and west anyways. What would be the difference?
Did you want to go ahead and address that?
Sure. Good afternoon. Nick Uren, county engineer. You're suggesting that the road should just travel along the southern and then western boundary of the proposed mining operation to its northwest corner and then come back east on the northern boundary?
Yeah, is there something that would stop us from doing that, or?
Candidly, the alignment that I've, that I've been presented with in our comp plan is a difficult alignment to construct for a through road in its current alignment. What we've chosen to do with this application is to say that the least amount of work needed at this point in time to evaluate alternatives is to just write the conditions to accommodate the future corridor as shown in the comp plan. I, I think the applicant would be amenable to saying if we can come up with an alternative. The question, operative question would be, who is the "we" in that sentence?
Well, oh, well, so...
Because I don't want the applicant to say, hey, I want to move a road, and then I have to run around to do a route study for a road I want to be planning to build.
My question isn't for the applicant. The applicant hasn't been up yet, but that, my question would be for you. Would the county, would your department be amenable to doing that? It just, like I said, in my line of...
Sure, your question is, would a realigned corridor with additional ninety-degree bends in it function similarly or provide a similar public purpose? Probably yes.
Okay.
We already, as you noted, we already have two ninety-degree bends in the corridor.
Right, and that's...
Your suggestion would be to add two more so that we could shift it further west. I, I want to make the caveat that the two ninety-degree bends make the road a less-than-ideal corridor to construct and use already. And adding more problems to it doesn't necessarily make it substantially less useful. But it, it does make it a little more complicated to construct.
Well, does the county already have right-of-way, like, south of the mine for the vision? Well, does the county already have right of way, like, south of the mine for the vision road? In other words, I'm seeing all these streets that go up and down, north and south, and they all look like they're spaced roughly equidistant apart. What would stop us from just moving the vision road over to the next block instead of the one that it's at? They all go to the same street to the south.
Yeah. And then you're back to two ninety degrees.
And then you're back to the just.
Instead of one.
And to me, it's a vision road. It'd be one thing if we'd gone out and bought and acquired right of way and, or if there were plans that have been produced already. But, and like I said, in my line of thinking, and it doesn't mean the rest of the board thinks like me, but it just seems, I'm just trying to figure out, how can we just, this is a type of project that no matter where you put it, there's always gonna be somebody that doesn't want it there, right? Mines, sewage treatment plants, landfills, these are things that society has needs for but are not desirable to be in anybody's backyard anywhere. So they gotta be somewhere. So I'm trying to figure out, how do we get the best use out of the property and extend its life? Because eventually you're gonna have more of these that proliferate to which there will be objections. So why not try to maximize the use of the resource you have, but?
So I, we probably need to let the applicant speak to this. I don't know. I think to them, the big loss is probably just the ability to mine wherever that road would be. I, I mean, cause in the.
Plus all the birmingham around it.
Well, yes, but I mean, they really don't need to install any of that until they're done mining anyway. So I mean, it's, to me, the real loss to them is the loss of the ability to excavate where that road would be. So I don't know that moving it to the edge of the property, it may help, I don't know. I mean.
Sure, you gotta, you gotta.
It helps with the efficiency of the.
The plan showed you'd be digging a pit, it'll have slopes, and then you're gonna have this road. It's got slopes, so you're losing all of that area which could potentially be mined.
One slope instead of two.
Right.
Yeah.
To go around, to go around the property. And like I said, I would understand if we already had purchased a corridor and there were, the right of way was in place and there were plans, but right now it's a conceptual line on a piece of paper somewhere that it just doesn't seem. And I, and I know normally when we come in with MPUDs, the applicants give the right of way for the vision road, and they agree to construct portions of the vision road, and that's kind of the normal thing. But it just seems in this case, it's something that inhibits the public benefit to the mine. And the public's benefit is that we have these materials available for our own local roadway. You know, the cap, the county's the, one of the biggest purchasers of these materials. So I.
Yeah, I, I still think we need to let the applicant.
Sure.
Because they've created plans based on where they're showing it today.
Just my thought.
I just don't know if they're gonna be willing to move it again, so, but let's, let's.
I have to move this down after Nick was speaking. Got me by a few inches. Clark Hobby, Hobby and Hobby, PA, one oh nine North Brush Street, Tampa, Florida, have been sworn. Uh, just, let me speak just generally first, just for a sec. So we've been operating this mine, uh, my client, Beatt Cully and his partners, for about ten years now. It was approved about fifteen years ago. And, um, we're, I believe, the only mine in the county that mines limestone and lime rock that doesn't blast. And so I think as a result of that and some other good neighbor policies we've had, you really don't see a lot of citizen objection. Mrs. Byron had concerns that I believe were caused entirely about, um, a couple of years ago. We had to resurface our paved drive coming in there, and they used a vibratory compactor, and I think it did some shaking a couple of days, and I think that's what got her worked up. But we have sound and vibration experts here, and we can answer any questions about that, but I'm convinced that's not a real issue. As to the, uh, the, the issue that Mr. Moody's raising, we would, of course, love to have the vision road moved to our western boundary instead of bisecting the mine. It really does inhibit the amount of volume we can extract from the mine, and it would make the mining process a lot more difficult. However, I did work this out with the county engineer in advance, and I understand his concerns, and I'm willing to honor what we agreed to. I think what I would suggest is if maybe we add a condition to the approval, subject to Nick's approval, that would say something like, if the county through a route study or another approval of the county engineer determines that the road can be rerouted to the western boundary, we can modify our mining plan and our conditions of approval on a non-substantial staff-approved basis to move the vision road over to the western boundary. That would help us tremendously, and hopefully that would leave the county engineer with what he needs to make sure that the road could get built, if it ever is built. Does that sound okay to you, Mr. Moody?
I appreciate your.
I wanna try, I mean, we, I shook hands with Nick, so I don't wanna pull the rug out from under him, but it would help us tremendously to move the, the road if it's possible.
Yeah, and that's just the way I see it too. It's just trying to get the maximum benefit out of something that I know is.
May or may not happen in the next, yeah. Could be a very long time out before that vision road happens.
For the commissioners, to be clear, I think what we're suggesting is if someone were to do a study in the future that determined that an alternative alignment was as beneficial to the public transportation system, to the roadway network, as this corridor, then these folks would be allowed to utilize that alternative alignment once it is formally established through the proper channels without having to go through a substantial administrative process to modify their approved plans. I have no objection to that.
What's the, Nick, what's the process to do such a study, a route study?
Well, and that's where I started down the path of, the, the important question is, who's the "we" doing it? If the applicant really wanted to move the road, they could've done the route study for us, presented content for our consideration, and then we could've interacted with that content as a part of this application.
So.
But I don't want to be placed in a position of having to do that study for them in response to a mining application.
I, I understand your position, but if they were to present you with a study, then that's something you would give consideration to?
Certainly.
Okay.
We, we have criteria for route studies, and if they wanted to perform a, a study compliant with the criteria and submit that for our consideration, we would absolutely interact with them on that point.
That way you wouldn't be beholden to when the county would decide to do this route study, if they ever decide to do it in the future. So if you feel like it helps your mining operation tremendously, then you can have the impetus to go and, and conduct that route study yourself.
That would be great from our perspective. Again, you know, I, I, I shook hands with Nick, and I wanna honor what his concerns were, and so as long as I'm doing that, but we have a, a possibility to make a better mousetrap somewhere down the road, that would be great for our clients, cause we do know we lose a tremendous amount of volume leaving the road and the right of way and the birmingham up against it. So we would love to have the possibility to do that. Other than that, we don't have an, I know the chairman hasn't called for a public comment, but if there aren't any other comments, I'll answer any questions you might have, and I'm happy to step aside and ask if there are any other comments from the public.
Anything else from up here?
Yeah.
Jamie, I was gonna ask.
Richard, go ahead.
This is, there, there has been no route study for this vision road, has there?
Correct.
No, there has not, and that's why, so what happens in this scenario, it's more or less like a marker line on the map, and it's not really set at this point. That, one of the questions that Mr. Moody raised that's really a valid one is, to my knowledge, the four roadways that are south of the mine don't have any public right of way. So if there's ever actually going to be a vision road there, there's going to have to be right of way acquired by the county at some point. So in my mind, it's a fairly speculative road, but I also understand the purpose of the highway vision map is for the county to maintain its options in case these kinds of roads are needed over time.
So that answers the question of, there is no timeline essentially for that, for that road at, at this.
Not to my knowledge. I have not heard anything. The only thing I've heard that's occurring is, I believe Hernando County is pursuing, putting in a signal at Linden. That is a major intersection on the north side of County Line Road. There's no question about that.
Okay.
So, just by way of background, I think our vision network that's adopted in our comp plan, I believe is based on a build-out plan of like twenty sixty or twenty sixty-five.
Yeah, it's the LRTB twenty sixty-five plan. So what they, what they do for, for everyone's benefit is, they take all of the potential entitlements that could be built out in the entire, the entirety of the county, and they try to create a roadway network that could distribute all the trips. So there's probably a lot of roads that won't get built that are on the highway vision map over, over a, you know, intermediate period of time, for sure.
Yeah, we'd hate for it to hurt your mining operations off of something that might not materialize ever, and if it does, it might be thirty years down the road.
Well, we, we'd love to be able to work with Nick and his team and maybe do our own route study, and if we can move it, that's great.
Is a separate condition required for that, or they just have that right no matter what by the code?
Well, I think, I think.
But these conditions are so specific that I think we probably need to add a, that type of condition I was talking about, Mr. Jority, because right now they're very specifically telling me what the condition I have to leave along this particular location. So I think we probably do need the ability to have a non-substantial modification approved at the staff level that would allow the, the right of way and the.
That condition to be removed at the.
To the western boundary.
After conducting your own route study.
Right.
We need to draft that condition today with our approval, or can that be something that they develop before the board?
I think you could just, we're the staff and the applicant to draft it after this meeting.
And that's fine.
It's like we did with the park condition earlier.
Fine with that. David and Roberto and Nick on it.
Very good.
Okay.
Hey Clark, just real quick, just to confirm for the record again, so Ms. Bryant's comments are regarding two different times, I'm looking at a letter specifically, so you're, you're saying on the record that that was the vibratory compactors that you're using?
That is my understanding from my client, that that was solely a result of us resurfacing the entry road. And by the way, that, where she lives is approximately eight hundred feet from the closest portion of the mine itself, and I don't think there's been any allegation that the actual mining activity caused any vibration or noise exceedances. We, interestingly, we, we had an update to our noise study done, and Jeff Straw with Geasonics is here about that in case there were any questions, but we don't, even without any noise attenuation through birmingham or trees or anything else, we don't exceed the daytime or nighttime levels during daily operations during the day. So we don't go over the noise level, so.
Has there been any vibration monitoring down on the north side of that?
I'm not aware that we've had like a perpetual monitoring up there. I think this was a one-time event, and I understand it probably scared her, because those vibrators, when they're, when they're using them to compact roadway beds can, you know, be a little bit disconcerting. But we've been out to meet with her several times now. We have a good onsite mine manager, and I'm confident it won't happen again.
Okay. My knowledge, drag lines don't really create vibration.
No, absolutely. But I'm just saying, just kind of head off the, head off the issue potentially in the.
He says the drag line operation.
Yeah, I, that's, I don't, I don't believe that.
Which is gonna be down eighty, ninety feet.
I don't believe the drag line's creating the.
That's what I'm saying.
Vibration. I, I don't, I don't see that happening.
But it's a, it is a drag line mine.
Right, right.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So can I ask Nick another question?
Yeah, sure. Nick? He has a question for Nick, I think.
Oh, okay. The question has to do with the, a route study. When we're looking at a, as Clark referred to it, a marker line on a map, what level of information is needed to justify one route over another? What are the, like, the considerations that go into that?
Generally speaking, you wanna minimize adverse impacts and ensure that the selected alternative for the corridor meets the functional purpose of the corridor. So when, if, you know, we were, we were just speaking on the side, if, if the alternative alignments are completely contained within the mining operation's boundary, but, but relegated to its perimeter, and they get back to the alignment in our comp plan without, prior to going offsite, then that becomes a very simple answer. There's only one impacted part, property. They like the alternative better. We find that the alternative is compliant with our expectations for the corridor. It gets to be a very easy yes. When the question starts to involve adjacent parcels and increasing impacts to some at, while decreasing impacts to others, that's when we get into more stringent criteria for the evaluation of the impacts and the benefits of the alternatives.
Just trying to get a feel for it. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Nick. All right, is there anybody here to give public comment on this item? Okay. Seeing none. Anything else from up here? Or motion?
What item, really? Is this P seven?
P seven?
So I move approval of P seven with the condition, modification to the condition that we discussed that would allow for the future study, route study.
And a non-substantial modification.
And a non-substantial modification. Correct, yep.
I would second that.
Raise a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries?
Yeah, let the record reflect.
Oh, you let the record.
Fair thing.
And also I didn't vote either, cause it's not a.
And Richard did not.
Residential project.
Cause he's not interested. He doesn't think there's gonna be any kids coming out of the mine?
I don't think so.
Not mining any children.
Even though they are digging them.
It's not gonna affect schools, huh?
Let the record reflect that I'm proudly handling this gavel back to Chairman Gray.
You put the hammer down.
Mr. Chairman, can we take a quick five-minute break before the sheriff speaks?
Yes.
Cause.
Take a five-minute recess.
Five-minute break. Five-minute break.
Sheriff, you ready?
Good to go.
Yes, we're good. I appreciate it.
Up there it is.
Very good. So Chris Nalko, eight six six one, Citizens Drive. I didn't make sure I got the right address. I want to thank you all very much. I, I know a few of you had saw the budget presentation back in the spring, and so you're trying to get me here and apologize conflicts. But, you know, I appreciate the invitation. So to give you a little bit of background, what's going on with, you know, how growth impacts us, what we see. You know, we have a quick PowerPoint presentation to go through. Talk about some of the things with residential growth. And I will always admit, you know, I'm not anti-growth. I'm always about planning. That, to me, is the biggest thing. It's plan, plan, plan. That's what we do. Storm comes. That's how we plan out the sheriff's office operation. We're constantly planning, planning, planning. And so as you go through the planning process, there's things that, you know, we hope, we can talk about today that would assist you all for questions and answers. So we are involved in the pre-app process. One of the things, you know, we talk about, so we are seeing a reduction in property crime, which is good. But the big thing for us is when you do approve residential property, you know, plans, you know, things that we put in the pre-app process that are not binding, we would hope that you all would fulfill and say, look, we need these things. You know, gates. Gates make a big difference. I can tell you, people come from out of this county to lift door handles in this county. The problem is, people leave their doors unlocked. People leave guns in their car. And we've caught people in the past on jail calls say to each other, hey, if you go to this neighborhood, target-rich environment, that's where you should go. You get guns, you get this. Like, they tell people, this is the neighbors you should go. So the more gates you put up, the more tag readers out there, the more it assists us moving forward. The other one, too, is even not just when any apartment complex is built or residential community is built, but even during the process when the developers are building, that is critical for us. I can't tell you how many calls we get, because there is a developer who's building a major project, but literally every night, something's being stolen. Literally every night, it's washer's gone, dryer's gone, this gone, and, you know, it adds up for us, because even though, you know, we take a report and everything, but we want to catch these people, because, you know, unfortunately, it ends up, you know, it keeps getting passed on to the consumer. So those things do add up, and services, calls for services keep piling up on us. The one thing we also look at is the ratio, and everything we put up there is through FDOL, a lot of the numbers, but, you know, if a thousand units are going to go through the process, you know, US Census says that for a thousand units, there's going to be 2.4 people per unit. So we would then say, okay, the average, what the national average is supposed to be is two deputies per thousand. So that's what we'll come back in the pre-approval and say, hey, this is just so the county commission understands, it's about two thousand, I mean, two deputies for a thousand residents. So why does this impact us? In Pasco County, we are sixty-third out of sixty-seven deputies per thousand. That's the Florida Department of Law Enforcement numbers. Sixty-third out of sixty-seven deputies per thousand. And I'll explain a little bit further how it shows towards other counties. The, part of it, too, is, we know that, you know, we've heard from people say, well, you know, you may approve a thousand units, but that doesn't mean the developer's going to, you know, build a thousand units. Maybe you only build 500. But I'll show you, we can't just sit there and wait until the certificates are given out and certificate occupancy is there. I'll show you what we call lag time. And if you just wait till that moment where, okay, the person moved in, now we're going to start giving you money for deputies, there's at least a 2.8, a two-years, eight-months process to hire somebody. We just don't go upstream and say, hey, this is great. We're going to go hire five people. What's good originally, let's just pick five people up. That's not how we do things. We can't do things that way. So we have to base things off of when the numbers come in and say, there's a thousand that got approved. We have to start planning off of that. So I'm going to start going through some of these slides, and please, questions as we go along, please let me know, and we'll push forward. So Pasco Sheriff's Office, we serve the seventh-largest population in the state of Florida out of sixty-seven. So this is where it's pretty staggering when you see the numbers. So Pasco County, 545,000. That's the sheriff's office. We believe that the cities are roughly 8% of the population. We are first responder, and we have jurisdiction throughout the entire county, including the cities, but we're jurisdiction over first responding to about 92%. But look at Pinellas County. So when you look at Pinellas County, it's roughly 300 and... I need glasses. 395,000 people. So 395,000, because you have to take into consideration, they have St. Petersburg, Tarpon Springs, Clearwater, Largo, and you can keep going through. They have municipalities. We have Newport Ritchie, Port Ritchie, Date City, and Zephyr Hills. And I will stand here, and I will be the, I'll cheerlead for them to annex as much as they want. Keep annexing, because the more they annex, the more they have to keep hiring, you know, officers, and, you know, it's less pressure on the sheriff's office. So I'm a big fan of them annexing areas. And so that's where, you know, for us standpoint, you know, we see other comparing counties, but we're up there with the highest ones. But I go back to it, we're sixty-third out of sixty-seven deputies per thousand. This is just shows the population, the disparity in growth. So within Pasco County, the top line shows our population growth. The bottom line shows the deputy growth. That difference keeps growing. That's the issue we're talking about. Our ratio of deputies per thousand keeps dropping, because the population growth is growing so fast, we just can't keep up with the number of deputies. We were in 2019, 1.08 deputies per thousand. In 2022, we're one deputy per thousand.
You said the ideal ratio is two?
Two. That's, that's the ideal that everybody tries to strive for. We're just striving for 1.3. I, I can show you numbers. If we get 1.3, would it be, you know, equivalent? If we were equivalent to Pinellas County, we'd have over 400 and... 499 more deputies, if we were equivalent to Pinellas County. Pinellas County's law enforcement budget is $450 million. That's not including the J.L. or Hope Center. Ours is roughly 170 million. So that's where, that's where you show the discrepancies. It also goes back to the fact that, you know, I saw, Ernest Young did a study within Pasco County, that 85% of our revenue, I mean, 85% of tax base, 85% of our tax base is based off of residential. I can, I can't imagine what a, what their healthy ratio is, but, you know, from a county standpoint, when we're basing our whole economy off 85% for residential, we're showing that, you know, we need to start diversifying more into the business, into the industry, commercial. We need to start figuring out different ways, because here's the other side of it. Everything, there's always a pattern in life. History always repeats itself. We're going to have another cycle called, there will be a downturn. Some point, sometime, there will be a downturn. When it's based off of residential again, we're going to be hurting. And that's the type of things that, you know, we look at from the sheriff's office standpoint, saying, keep planning ahead. What are we looking at? And we saw that 85% was residential-based taxes. That's not good. The other part, too, is the reason why I say that, is the US Department of Agriculture has a study out there. For every one dollar that comes in for residential, it actually costs the county a dollar and 13 cents. So we may get a dollar residential, but it costs us a dollar 13 for services. So we're losing 13 cents on every dollar residential. That is a major issue that we're looking at, saying, you know, we need, we need a little bit more diversity in the county, but those are things that are going to keep pushing, that we are concerned about. So this is the lag time. So somebody moves into Pasco County, say somebody actually, they move into an apartment, they, well, no apartment, they move into a new townhouse in 2024. By the time they actually pay their taxes, it's not until January of 2025. So then, in January 2025, pays the taxes, it gets collected, it goes to the county commission. The county commission says in October of 2025, okay, sheriff's office, here's your money. Start hiring people for deputies. Okay, great, thank you. Then, by the time we actually get them hired, trained, you know, go through the entire process, you're looking at October of 2026. So between February 2020, 24 and October of 2026, you're looking at, you know, over two years and eight months of basically, we're providing services, and we don't have enough deputies. That's why you keep seeing that discrepancy in amount of deputies per thousand ratio. This is the other thing, too, and I said before, property crimes are going down, absolutely. And, you know, kudos to our deputies. God has blessed us with a phenomenal team. But what doesn't get captured in the crime numbers are the threats. So these are school threats over the past several years. Last year, we had 340. 340 school threats. Let me, I'll just very briefly tell you what happens in a school threat, and I'll give you an example. Goff Middle School. Goff Middle School in one week, I think, had three, four, possibly five. I don't know if it was that many, but it had four in one week. We get a school threat at, at Goff Middle. We have to send a whole bunch of deputies. Where they're all, they're running lights and sirens. We send several dogs, because we're searching the school, looking for guns, because they said, oh, somebody had a, somebody said they had a backpack, had a gun in the backpack. We are sending the cavalry. We go out there. There could be 20, 30 deputies that were pulling off calls. We're pulling from all over the place. I remember, I was there. I was at Goff Middle School. As that was going on, another call came in at Sunlake. And so now we're pulling deputies from all over the county, trying to get, now we have two locations, school threats going on, and basically, all the other calls for service, which I'll show, starts adding, piling up. But this is the issue that we deal with. This is not coming, it's not, you know, it's not listed as, oh, there's a, you know, we arrested somebody. We barely can make arrests, because so many of these crimes are just, comes through an anonymous tip line. Kids know, they know the process, how to get through. But these are the things that keep going on. And let me tell you, so far this year, we're trending 190 school threats. It's, it went through the roof. The only reason that 190 is 190 is because we basically, they had a month off from school with hurricanes. So when you take all those hurricane days, if you didn't have that, that number would be almost matching a full year last year. So that's what I just keep saying. These are things that, you know, this is law enforcement. This is what we deal with. This is not even talking about all the mental health issues that we're dealing with, the people that run away, the people that are attempting to commit suicide. Those are things that we're consistently getting called to. So these are our zones. These zones haven't, you know, it's one, basically one deputy per zone. Our population in Yankee II has grown tremendously. Zulu IV, and so I will tell you, early 2013, 2014, I sat with each of our commissioners at the time, when Zulu IV used to be cow pastures. And I said, look, you know, growth is coming. We have to plan for growth. This is no different than what the schools have to deal with. I mean, we have to deal with growth. Well, unfortunately, growth came, but the support for public safety didn't follow or match it. So that's the issue that we're dealing with right now, is the fact that we're just outnumbered out there. And you're dealing with the amount of growth. Now, I know somebody will say, well, why don't you just make one of the ID units in Holiday area? Why don't you, you know, increase that, but then you make Yankee II smaller? Those ID zones never, it's not like people left and migrated out of Holiday to go. There's still population growth there. So these are the type of things we're facing. Now, we're trying to evaluate it, but until we can get a substantial, a substantial amount of more deputies, we're not going to be able to push forward. So that's the one thing that we're dealing with when you look at these zones. And I could tell you, the Yankee zones out in Wesley Chapel, it's taking almost twice as long to travel to calls for service there than it is in, in the Zulu zones or ID zones. And the reason why? They literally sit in traffic the whole time. Unless they have to go run lights and sirens, which still can take 20 minutes, it's, the traffic over there is absolutely tremendous. So this is what I was just talking about, where calls for service can stack up. So this is a Wednesday afternoon. This is the one that we provided the commissioners, and that's why I provided you the same exact one. This is February 28th. This is 2:40 in the afternoon. With all the calls going on, we're still holding 32 calls. We're holding at the time. You know, mental health calls are going on, domestics are going on. In the middle of the afternoon, 32 calls we're holding. And so, yes, we do try to put our deputies out in certain hours to make sure that, you know, hey, when the higher-ups volume comes in, but this is 2:40 in the afternoon. This isn't 5, 6 o'clock at night. This is right in the middle of midday. So that's the very quick, short presentation. The only thing I request is that when the pre-approval process comes through and you see recommendations for the sheriff's office to say, hey, look, security features, gates, cameras, those type of things, please strongly recommend them, because that does make a difference. It does make a difference in the morning, when deputies get the call and they say, oh, we had this one street that we got hit by, 15 cars got hit. That's 15 reports. And yes, we use desk officers as much as we can, but there's a lot of times we do have to send deputies out to scenes, and that, these are, these take a lot of our workload up.
So do you regularly make such suggestions on, because we get these staff memorandums for each of these cases, and I have never seen anything in there. I've seen your standard statement that you don't oppose development, and you talk about the lag time for hiring deputies and the need, but I've never, never once seen a recommendation for gates or cameras or...
I can tell you why there's a disconnect here, because I think the sheriff is talking about a pre-app on a site plan, which typically, you're not seeing the site plan approvals come. You're seeing a zoning approval, you're seeing the plan amendments, you're seeing the, also the macro-level stage. The types of comments the sheriff's talking about are, you know, gates, security cameras, securing the site. That typically would be something you'd see at a pre-app for a site plan.
Yeah, but I do pre-apps for site plans, and I can't ever recall, and I don't know, I'll ask Jamie, I can't ever recall anybody from the sheriff's department being in there and commenting, so.
I can bring forward Colonel Samborn. So Colonel Samborn.
I'm not saying you don't.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
Because he used to do the process. I'll let Colonel Samborn come up, because he used to do them, and now it's Major Irazari, but, no, no, I, I get him, so I'll let the Colonel explain when, when he was on there, what he was doing.
Colonel Samborn, on behalf of the sheriff's office. So the, the form that you're talking about, that's where they're contained. We typically don't make those SIM recommendations on larger-scale residential properties. We focus primarily on the multifamily and the townhome properties, where there's a centralized association of some sort. We ask that they be gated. We ask that there be outdoor lighting. We ask for the LPRs.
And so is this happening at this site plan process, or that, because, I mean, I do site plan pre-apps and approvals, and I've never seen it, and I've never seen it come through in one of the zonings.
Certainly. When they send it out to all the various entities for, for commentary, and it goes into, I may pronounce it wrong, Akela or Cella, whichever system that it uses. We don't have direct access into Akella. We send that, that response that has that same generic response. If you get to the bottom paragraph of that, because we don't, we don't do a form, you know, it's a form letter that then gets filled in, and you should have seen on that same letter the math that the sheriff is talking about, where this will provide, you know, 700 new residential units, which is going to equate to 700 times 2.4, where we'll have to account for that in future budgets, or it equates to this number of deputy sheriffs.
Right. I see that statement a lot in the, in the rezoning reports, but I've never seen any specific things like that for the gates or the camera. That interests me. And, you know, is it appropriate to get those at the zone?
Well, I was actually going to come up with a better suggestion, which is, why don't we put these in the code? I mean, if, if you're having to recur, if you're having to make this comment on almost every application, that you want gates, security cameras, to me, the better place to deal with that would just put it in our land. that you want gates, security cameras, to me, the better place to deal with that would just put it in our land development code and then staff will just apply it as part of our land development code. It's not, it's not just on a case-by-case basis.
My question is legality on acquiring these.
And that would help us tremendously because the meetings that Mr. Moody's talking about, I used to attend virtually. It, it came to a point where, particularly on the days that they're scheduled to take, it, it was taking up a large portion of my day. And, and the, the times that I attended those meetings in digitally, right, personally, but digitally. And I made those recommendations to the developer. The one and only question that would get asked after all of my recommendations wasn't to me, but about me. And it was, are those binding recommendations or are those just like, hey, you guys would prefer it? I said, well, those are, those are preferences. And I would try and make the case that not only would building that community keep, help the sheriff's office, but it would make your community more desirable for the folks that are going to live there. And they said, okay. And, and that became very obvious that since it was a non-binding recommendation, that nobody really cared what I had to say. And so attending those at, at, at great cost during my day when I had other things to do became a frivolous endeavor. So we started including those recommendations.
Yeah, I think what needs to happen is you probably need to get with our planning department, Mr. Ingles sitting right there, and coordinate, we have an ordinance development team that works on making changes to our land development code. And then those changes to land development code make their way to this body. And then they make a recommendation to the board, so. But it all starts with working with staff to get those, those requirements into the land development code. You also mentioned wanting better security, security of the sites while they're under construction. That's something we could also address in the land development code. So it seems to me, rather than us trying to, you attending all these meetings and making non-binding suggestions, if you want some meaningful impact, let's get it in the code.
Yeah, that, that sounds fantastic to me, Mr. Goldstein. I, I don't think that we have any issue working forward on that at all. That would be a tremendous level of efficiency that we've yet to achieve, and, and so I agree.
Yeah, we want to do everything we can to help.
Yeah. The other question, David, I have.
Yeah, I, let me just make one caveat though. So I, I do think we can work on a lot of what you suggested. I will say though, that there are probably some roadways in the county that our planning staff are not going to want to be gated. You know, there's certain collectors and art materials that, that function for through traffic that we can't have gated, so...
For clarity, we actually didn't, part of the reason Mr. Moody probably hasn't seen him is we don't, we don't even really, we didn't, we never really added those recommendations to your residential, so your Connertons and your places like that. We're, we're, we were largely focused on the multifamily.
But a lot of times they come in here for multifamily entitlements, the townhouses and the apartments and wondering if...
And so we understand that when you've got those residential communities and folks that are coming off of main roads and, and places like the Meadow Points, where you have a Meadow Point Boulevard that passes all the way through it, you're not going to want to put unnecessary blockades to, to regular traffic. So totally agree with everything you're saying and, and don't have any issue with that at all.
I'm sorry, Mr. Moody, go ahead.
So I'm hearing the need for being able to get the deputies hired, trained, the, the staffing. When it comes to impact fees, we charge a fire combat fee. So the question that I have is, typically, impact fees are applied for things that bring new capacity, not general operation and maintenance. The question is, can an impact fee be developed for the sheriff? I mean, if you, like you said, he has a thousand units and that's going to have two point four people per unit and he needs two more deputies. If we want development to pay for itself, is it appropriate to assess an impact fee for the sheriff? But I don't, and this goes to my question about O and M versus new capacity. I'm trying to figure out how you do that.
A question related to that, which is, when he puts a new deputy on the road, how much of that cost of that new deputy is salary versus equipment? In other words...
And one-time cost, training is probably...
Because the one-time capital cost to, to fund the car, the police vehicle, the equipment, the guns, the, the, the uniforms, those can all be funded with impact fees.
What about one-time costs like training and?
No, it's got to be a capital cost. It's got to be a fixed cost, okay? Same kind of things that we fund with a penny for Pasco. It's got to be a fixed capital cost. So to answer your question, we don't have a, currently have a law enforcement impact fee. We do have a fire rescue impact fee. But even the fire rescue impact fee can only fund capital.
That's, so that's, that's the nature of the question. If there were, if, if the board were to adopt a law enforcement impact fee, what could those monies be used for?
So it would be, it would be capital. So now, interestingly, I know the sheriff doesn't run the jail anymore, but you could actually use it to expand your jail as well. So, so there was, the reason I know all this is because this predates the sheriff. But back in two thousand and four, when we developed the fire rescue impact fee, there was going to be a law enforcement impact fee that was going to fund the very cost that I just talked about, capital cost for the sheriff, use it to expand the jail. I don't want to go into all the various reasons why it didn't happen, but it just didn't happen. And so unfortunately, because it didn't, we could have been collecting revenues since two thousand and four that could have been used for expanding the jail, used for some of the sheriff's capital costs. It's not going to fund his salaries, but it, it, but if you had an impact fee, it might at least help. You know, it's less money that you'd have to worry about in terms of...
Right. So what I'm getting at is, so we have growth, we get new apartment units, we get new single-family detached. That's ad valorem revenue, a portion of which goes to his department to fund salaries and that. But impact fees can be used for these capital costs. And that's what I'm trying to figure out, how much of that is actually, like I said, a percentage?
So, I mean, to me, the best model in our county is what we do for fire rescue, okay? Because fire rescue has an impact fee to cover its capital costs, and then it has an MSTU to deal with all of its operational costs, salaries. Now, I know the board has had some discussions with the sheriff about potentially doing an MSTU for law enforcement. But I think the logical combination with that would be an impact fee so that the taxpayers are not funding the entire cost of growth.
Right. Well, the, I mean, the whole theory behind the impact fees is that growth has to pay, development has to pay for itself. So it, the development is spurring the need for the additional deputies, the additional equipment. It would seem to me that that might be appropriate.
So, so sheriff, along this line of speaking, what percentage of that two point eight years would you say is attributed? So of all the costs of that deputy over the two point eight years, what percentage of that is fixed capital cost and what percentage is salary?
So I could give you, general, general salary and benefits is roughly eighty-five percent of our budget. So out of that, the, you know, basically, you're looking at...
But within that first few years though, it's, it's front-loaded with, with capital costs.
So your vehicles, your vehicle is basically your, like, your vehicle and your equipment, but this all gets, this gets replaced over time anyway. Your vehicle gets replaced after a couple of years. So where the money would probably go towards with an impact fee is technology. So we try to utilize technology as much as possible. And so that's why if that would, you know, under law, if we were able to use it for technology, that, that is where we would get our biggest bang for our buck, because then we can shift the money that we're spending on technology in our, in our general budget towards other operating expenses. So, yeah. The one thing about the MSTU, and it, one thing Mr. Goldstein made, made a good point. This is, and I'll tell you, I say this publicly to the commissioners too. This is my concern of creating a MSTU right away for the sheriff's office. This is our budget right now, where we are. And I, look, I go back to, I told the county commissioner, I had a meeting with one of our commissioners on Friday. I said, look, I get it. There's no money anywhere. And when eighty-five percent of our, when eighty-five percent of the money coming into Pasco County is from residential and we're losing nineteen cents on every dollar, from a business standpoint, that's, we're, we're all losing. So I get it. If the commission had the money like we do, they do in Pinellas or Hillsborough, and you had ports and airports and hotels on the beaches, all this, you're bringing that tax revenue in, it's much different. It's not that way in Pasco. We're a heavily residential community and we're losing nineteen cents on the dollar. My concern of an MSTU is, if we are at, this, this is where we're at now. This is where we need to be. And you're going to try to create this with an MSTU right away, that will probably be one of the largest increases in taxes in Pasco history that we would ever see. So my thing is, we would have to prioritize what the needs are first. Try to bring up the budget for the sheriff's office before you go to the MSTU, because if not, you're just going to create a, all, all you're doing is filling that gap with the MSTU, which in today's day, in the, the, you know, when people are struggling right now, that would be one of the largest tax increases ever in this county. And I would be, I would say no. Until we get, until we start prioritizing some things, I think that would not work out well.
But going back to the impact fee discussion, it seems like a logical first step, because even if it's only fifteen percent of your costs, it's fifteen percent of the costs that are not being passed on in the MSTU to the taxpayer. So, I mean...
And I, I think it's probably more than that in the first two, two point eight years, or by the time it becomes eighty-five percent.
So, so, I mean, fire rescue is right in the middle of doing an impact fee study. They have a consultant working on it. Have you had any, is it possible you could have a starter dialogue with, with JJ and...
Absolutely. We would love to be a part of it.
About, about getting a study done for law enforcement.
For, for any impact fee, absolutely. We'd love to be a part of that conversation. There's a lot that, you know, especially us and fire rescue are trying to do together now. And so this would help us and...
Well, I think it may also help the county, because we have a jail that at some point is going to have to be expanded again. And if we're not accumulating revenue...
Don't worry, I lived there for twelve years. I know, yeah, I've been, I've been crying at River for a long time. I don't have to cry anymore, yeah.
So I'm just saying...
You're one of the few people that lived there voluntarily for twelve years.
Yeah, I, I lived that one.
Are there, I'm trying to be careful how I phrase this question, but are, when it comes to residential and non-residential development, are there different types that demand more or less of your resource? I think you were inferring that the non-residential probably doesn't need as much sheriff's department resources. So for instance, is there any difference between single-family detached and townhomes or versus apartments?
So it, it's a great question. It's funny, because I go to, I go to presentations and I hear people just talk about the county in general. Like, I'm sick of seeing car washes and storage units. I'm like, I love them. I said, they pay taxes and never calls. I drive by all the time. Like, these are great. At two o'clock in the morning, they're not, they're not saying sheriff's office, you know, we got this fight in progress. It's like, there's nobody there. So the, the answer is, it depends on the population. So we go to million-dollar single-family houses with domestic disputes. We go to apartment complexes that have section eights with domestic disputes. The only difference is the, the density. So if the density is very tight, yeah, we're going to go there more often because there's more people there.
So then, so then, the density, the number of deputies you need per capita, it's just a matter of, okay, if we're going to approve a large multifamily development, it's just that you need more deputies to cover that additional density?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, can I add to that conversation though, is that you also have to look, to fully answer your question, you also have to look at the type of residential in terms of what is its tax generation? Because part of what the sheriff was bringing up is the loss of tax revenue on residential. There are certain forms of residential that, because of homestead exemption, because, I mean, they're, there's probably, in, in, in general, paying us less taxes than what they're consuming in services. So there are, you know, for example, you get a mixed-use residential project where it's got commercial on the bottom, residential on top. It's probably generating more taxes than it's consuming in services, because the whole building is generating substantial tax revenue. That may not be the case for a standard, single-family home that's paying homestead, getting homestead exemption and everything else. So you, to me, when you're looking, I understand the sheriff's looking at density, but you also have to look at what is the tax generation of that unit. And there are some forms of residential that are generating more taxes to the county than others. Not because of anything the county created, but because the state legislature has created certain exemptions for certain types of residential that they don't create for other types of residential, and so that affects our, our tax revenue.
Yeah, there was, there was a couple of things I was going to bring up, because you have to, the dollar thirteen of cost per dollar worth of tax revenue brought in, that's kind of an average across all residential. So when we're trying to do planning, we probably would want to see what that data looks like for a single-family development versus a townhome versus a multifamily.
I'd really love to see it too, yeah.
Yeah. And then the other thing too is, because you mentioned two point four residents per unit, that, that calculation will vary as well across those different property types. So it may be a different number in single-family versus townhome and multifamily. So that would be something else that we have to take into consideration. And when you figure those calculations out, you know, the, the taxes may be better, but the, the need for the deputies may be better, may be larger as well, so it might wash.
No, that's, that's, so that number we got is from the U.S. Census, is a two point four. I could tell you, going to houses, there's a lot more families that are living together in houses than two point four. You're getting multi-generational that are, kids are not moving out of their houses, grandparents are moving in, and you can go into two families living in the same house.
Is that data part of the Bieber study that U.S. does?
In terms of the, of long-back generation?
No, the, yeah, the, yeah, the, the residents per...
Number of people per dwelling unit?
We have data on residents per dwelling unit, because we do it for impact fee purposes, so...
By property type?
Yes. And I don't have it in front of me. I mean, Richard, do you remember what your...
Yeah, but I mean, it's a little bit different, because we have elementary or, you know, school-age kids as far as adults, but it's not exactly, you know, because like for ele, for single-family homes, for an elementary kid, it's point one eight.
Mr. Ingles, do you remember, like, on average, what our occupancy is per home or residence per home?
Two point five four.
It's pretty close.
But that's across all dwelling unit types, correct?
That's according to the standards in the American Community Survey two thousand and twenty-two.
So is there variation between, that number between dwelling unit types?
Right. Multifamily obviously is less per household than single-family, but the blend is two point five four.
So that's why I'm saying it would be good to know the breakdown of those things when it comes to trying to figure out the impact on law enforcement going forward.
We're doing that now. We're revising our comprehensive plan, and it would be a great time to entertain a discussion with the sheriff's office.
Okay.
No, and I appreciate that. It's, I give you all credit, because I think it's been thirty years since that's been updated. So we appreciate that. That's great that it's going to be updated. We'd love to be a part of it. We told the commission, we want to be a part of it, because that is a big part. The one thing too is also just keep in mind, and I honestly appreciate you all. This is the first time it's ever come up to bring us involved with the impact fee. So thank you all very much. We want to be involved in that. We, we need bodies, like for fire department, they need firehouses. That's a big thing for them. They, because they stay there. For us, we're constantly on the street, patrolling. It's a different model. So that's what I say, but if we can use that impact fee for other, like, technology, aviation, drone, those type of things that are making us more efficient, then we'll be, you know, the more efficient we are, the better we can hopefully get deputies to calls for service, handles calls for service, and, you know...
I'm sure it's kind of dependent on what the statute allows for that. The, the last question I had, and I'm going to shut up.
But I would say, in general, yeah, I think you can. I think if it's a capital cost with the technology, I mean, I could tell you libraries uses it for books. So if libraries can use it for books, you, I think we can find a way that you could use it for technology.
So the last question I had, and, and like I said, I'll shut up, and this is probably better to David as well. So do we have data? Because I would assume the empirical data is there. Do we have data on the average number of units that are, have been built over time versus what was entitled?
We don't have that data across the county, but I'll give you an example. VOPH is running at a sixty percent of entitlement run rate right now, and we use that as a benchmark, because it's similar to the MPUDs that we're approving.
Because that would be something, I mean, the, the data's got to be there. If we look back historically, now, obviously, it's just a prediction. But that could be helpful as well, because then we can look at, you know, okay, if we know that there's a sixty percent flow-through rate on what are we approving entitlements, then that can help us on those calculations as well, and, and help the sheriff's office.
So that he can better plan for when he needs the, the deputies, but, you know, we've had, hopefully, we're going to get to a more normalized market. I think the post-COVID growth, when we saw a rapid increase in population, these people moved down from the northern states and all into our area that caused this rapid population explosion, but we don't have that same phenomenon going on. There's still growth going on, but we don't have the, the pandemic push that was going on.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't adopt best practices though.
No, I agree, but hopefully, he can get some data so that in a more normalized market, then it helps him plan for when he needs these resources, you know, the human resources and the equipment available.
I would think that flow-through shouldn't matter what the market looks like. It's probably a...
You know, sheriff, in the eighties and nineties, there were a lot of people from all over the world buying properties here, homes, residences. And they'd come and spend, you know, six or eight weeks here and then use it like an Airbnb the rest of the time. And of course, they don't get homestead exemption. The county, in their wisdom, got rid of that ability to do that. And of course, now, we've reverted, I think, more to an economy based upon everybody having homestead exemption, or what I call a low-income rental. And, you know, and I think that has... And, you know, and I think that has had a dramatic negative impact on our economy, because not only do you decrease the number of homes that are paying full boat on, on the value of their home, but you also tend to depress the amount of people that are coming in for holidays, spending money, have money to spend. And, you know, and when we, when we had properties like that, the owners had to maintain their property, or otherwise, it, it couldn't, they wouldn't rent, because there are people coming here and paying a thousand dollars a week to stay in a home with a pool, and it had to be nice. And now, there's no justification to do that. They just let the home run, go to seed, you know, and it's, it falls down to the lowest common denominator. So I think the county did a very bad thing when they got rid of the ability to do the short-term rentals. Properties were better maintained, values remained up, and you were getting a higher volume of people with money to spend, and which resulted in more revenue for the sheriff's department and for everybody. So, I mean, I think if we looked at it right now, the percentage of homes in Pasco that are occupied and have homestead exemption, I think would be dramatically more than were in the eighties and nineties. And, and I think that's going to, that will, no, no doubt, create a loss of revenue.
And it's interesting, as you're saying, I was thinking, we're in another seismic shift, because what we're going to see west of 19, because of these two storms, is going to be a seismic shift in Pasco County. And it'll be interesting to see which way it starts moving towards, but, yeah, it's, it's devastating what happened, but that's what I said, that, that was a seismic shift, and we're about to enter a new one.
And, and that's going, what I'm just talking about is going to have an impact on that, because if, I mean, a lot of those homes are, you know, they're going to fall under the 50% rule, where, you know, if the value of the home, to replace it or rebuild it, is more than 50%, you have to knock it down and start all over again. So what do you end up with? End up with somebody that had a $200,000 mortgage on their home, and the home is no longer there. So all I really have is a lot to sell. So the only people you're going to sell it to, to make anything out of it, are people that have enough money to come in and actually buy the lot, pay off the mortgage, and build a new home, and build it much nicer, much higher, and much, and will create much more tax value. Or if you don't do something to help, to, to, to encourage those type of people to come here, you're going to end up with a vacant lot. And again, no, no tax revenue. So, you know, I think the county needs to really think about how they're going to address those issues, because people are going to be devastated if they can't afford to rebuild their home. And there's going to be a lot of those. You know, because unfortunately, most people do have mortgages. And, you know, if your home's gone, you know, have nothing, you have nothing to fall back on. You still have to pay off your mortgage. And so, you know, I think these are, these are the kind of things that people need to think about and address before they do something like the county did before, and just carte blanche, get rid of people that, that are willing to come here and spend their money, have a second home on the water, a nice one. And it could make a huge difference in the economy. You're right.
You're exactly right on that. Could a law enforcement impact fee be zoned, like we do mobility fee rates, that there's different rates throughout the county? In other words, so for instance, the sheriff's probably not seeing rapid growth in Holiday and Hudson. Well, he is in Hudson now, but he's seeing a lot of rapid growth in Wesley Chapel, and so that impact fee money can be directed for deputies in that particular, what was it?
You can, I mean, you could do it by zones, but, but only slight concern with that is that sheriff's right, they don't, they don't have fixed locations like fire rescue does. I mean, they, when you put a police car on the road, it's traveling all over the county. And so, or a gun, or a, or a uniform, or our jail serves the whole county. I mean, so I, it.
No, it's not confined to itself.
It's, it's going to be hard to say that the payment of a fee for his police cars don't benefit the whole county. I mean, because typically, you do those zones when there's a benefit. The reason mobility fee does it is because typically, people tend to drive in the same area of the county when they live there. I'm not sure that his infrastructure costs, you know, if he buys a drone, it's probably used countywide. I, I don't think he's going to limit it to just, you know, one piece of the county. So it can be done, but for that particular type of infrastructure, my problem, that recommendation would be that they not do that, because it unduly restricts where he can spend his money. I don't want to tell the sheriff, you can only use your drone in Wesley Chapel. I don't, I just don't think that's going to work.
And doesn't it in my neighborhood?
For good reason.
Actually, that's the wave of the future. And as I said, we're on the, we're ahead of the curve, but we actually come up with plans that, you know, with the drones, you, there's certain locations, you can actually fly ahead of the call for service, figure out what's going on, but with, you know, and then basically make it safer for the citizen, make it safer for the deputies. And what we're also doing is in the long run, trying to reduce helicopter costs. The helicopter flights cost extreme amount of money compared to drones, and so that's something, as we move over time, there are, there are certain uses for the, for the helicopters, you know, whether it's repelling down, pulling somebody out of the flooded situation, for tactical situations, or for pursuit. There are times, but majority of the time, we can use a drone and those, those type of things. For an impact fee to be used towards that, that makes us more efficient, we save on gas dollars on the helicopter, and then we can roll that back into deputies.
And by the way, even fire rescue, which is more location specific, because they're sometimes responding to calls throughout the county, you know, if they get a large fire, they're calling in multiple stations. So even though, even now, we don't do it by, by geography.
Well, we appreciate being involved in the impact fee study. That's a great suggestion. Thank you very much, and.
Land development code thing.
Yeah, I think you should talk to David Ingles' team about getting some of that codified, so that I, you know, I don't want to see you have to send somebody to every pre-op meeting and make a suggestion every time that isn't even being followed, so.
I've already approached the sheriff's team, and we're going to, setting up a meeting now.
Well, and, and the, you know, the reason I was bringing up the whole, the ratio thing is because, you know, we see something similar to that with schools, right? So we say, this project is likely going to generate X number of children. There's no reason why we couldn't figure out the numbers to be able to figure out, all right, this project's going to likely generate the need for 3.6 deputies.
Well, and the benefit of an impact fee study is it'll look at all that.
Yeah.
We will have concrete data on how many deputies an apartment complex generates or a single family home.
That'd be great. Because that's what I would love to see on a memo, you know, on a.
But that's the other thing, that's why I'm encouraging them to go down the impact fee route, because then we'll have better data on the impact. Even though if it's only paying for the capital part of it, it'll still let you know, hey, how much, how many deputies does a single family home generate, or an apartment complex, or, or a Walmart, whatever it is, the impact fee looks at that.
And your big need is in that first 2.8 years. That's where you're, that's where you're kind of behind the eight ball, because once you hit the 2.8 years and tax revenues come online, and you can kind of fund that from that point forward, in theory, you should be able to.
We can, but it goes back to that one screen where the population's still outgrowing.
Sure. You're always playing catch up.
Yeah, we're always playing catch up.
Just from what I hear, I mean, just seeing the number of entitlements we give, I never realized until today, basically with his numbers, every time we approve 400 apartment units, he needs a deputy. That, that, that happens on a routine basis every meeting here, it seems like.
And what's, what's the cost of a deputy?
Roughly two, to start off, roughly $200,000. And so I can tell you, last year, in the first six months, how many was it? Yeah, there was 40,000 entitlements, so, and then, what was it, it was right, it came back in my head. 80 deputies? Yeah. So that would have been 80 deputies in the six month period last year.
And what's your average annual cost per deputy for benefits and salary?
That's, so that's starting off, we always do it from the starting off. The problem is after that, it's hard to get a ratio, because the deputy with two years on is going to be different than four years on.
Yeah, that's true.
So that's, that's, that's the hard part of getting that, but we always say, to start off, it's roughly $200,000 a year, but, as I said, we had 40,000 were approved, and that would have been 80 deputies.
Yeah, I just feel like the impact thing would still be pretty useful, because in that first 2.8 years, you're going to be front loaded with capital cost, and then it's going to become more salary from that point forward.
Advantage of an impact fee is we collect it at CO. The sheriff's pointing out with the taxes, it's like there's that two-year lag before we.
Right.
Really collect the taxes.
Right, so that accelerates the time in which he's getting.
At least with the capital part, we'd get that closer to when he needs it.
Yeah.
David, I just wanted to ask a question. I think you mentioned, so this would be residential and commercial too, correct?
I think the impact fee should look at both. I understand the sheriff has less needs in the commercial side.
Right, but you still get calls.
But I can tell you, the fire rescue pays, the commercial pays the fire rescue impact fee currently.
Yeah.
I'm sure he gets calls for service at Walmart.
Yeah.
Times a day. Well, I appreciate it all. God bless you. Thank you all very much. Have a great day.
Thank you, Sheriff.
All right, Liam, anything else?
Nope, that's it. I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, since I won't see you before then.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, yeah. You too.
Thank you, Liam.
You too. Thank you for that.
Don't eat too much turkey.
Sorry, what was that?
Thank you for that 10-minute presentation.
Yeah.
Well, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to adjourn.
You have a second? Any discussion, all in favor? Aye. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
... lakes and rivers, creating an unhealthy environment for fish, waterfowl, and other aquatic. Drains are meant for clean rainwater. Most other discharges are illegal. Please contact Pasco County Department of Public Works at 727-834-3611.